Session, uh, February eighth, August fourteenth, um, our first agenda item, uh, sorry, folks, I don't have a certain harmony, but I believe it's the RAM data. So, so more requests us back to see that data again is aggregated by our elementary buildings, um, along with the RAM schools, and I am doing my job putting that together. You'll see the fast math first, and then we are in the second year of implementing the fast math universal screener, and we do that three times a year just like we do our fast, um, reading assessments, and that is just a screener, so it's the kind of a first blush that we get that there perhaps could be a problem with the student in that and with according to the benchmark set forth at that time. Um, let's see, what else? So talk about math first. Uh, that assessment that we use is AMAT, which is a computer adaptive assessment. So all students are on the computer to take this assessment, and it's computer adaptive, so it may start the kiddos out at grade level, but then it either sizes them up or maybe takes them back depending on how they first respond to those first few questions. Like I shared, we've now been implementing it for two years, um, in every single category, across every RAM group and subgroup that we've displayed here, although one saw an increase last year, so it's nice to see that little bump. I went to check, just out of curiosity, how that was comparing to what we were seeing with our Iowa assessment data, so we wanted to see how, given that the assessment isn't the same, and this is a group of K six students and Iowa assessment, we'll do three six, um, our proficiency data is still showing that this assessment is producing lower results than what we would see with Iowa assessments. So the last year that we had the Iowa assessment data available would have been the fall of, what's it, seventeen, seventeen, which shows us about seventy percent proficient, three six in math, and this is probably right around, I believe sixty five percent of them were right. Um, so that's just something that we're keeping an eye on, but I'm pleasantly surprised that we see data catered from different directions. Diane, you want to say anything more about that?
Yeah, I would just say that, um, the fast assessment, Amy said, um, being on the computer, it's a broad range of math skills, so it might have some numbers questions, some problem solving questions, some geometry, some data, so it's a bunch of different questions kind of depending on how they're getting answers and whether it's kind of challenging them or kind of dropping back a little bit too. And then the purpose of the, of the assessment is really to try to identify the kids who will potentially struggle, um, when given the Iowa assessments, right? So, and they have a little bit wider net than the Iowa assessments would, so I think that's why we see that percentile being a little bit lower here, because what it's doing is it's trying to capture every kid who will, who has intention to not do well on this data assessment, so that we can identify them early, put interventions in place, and then hopefully mediate those deficit skills so that they will do well on the professional assessment.
So you might ask a question about students on the computer at such an early age, and we are going to make a switch this year for the first time with our K one kiddos, we're going to actually have them working online with their teachers on the assessment, so we're going to move to early math assessment instead of the computer adaptive. Now, fast, when we took over and talked about that for reading, we give both, um, early reading measures as well as a video measure, so your pencil, and, but they are all, also used to A, B, C, computer adaptive test, so they're getting both ways of reading, but we are going to make that change in math, just to see what difference we might see there, as well as, um, if we can pinpoint even further what we best should mention at that level. That'll be happening this fall.
So we're, we're going to do a hybrid?
No, this fall, we're going to be moving completely away from the computer adaptive math, that's for K one, and the students will be assessed upon by classroom teachers on early math skills instead of being on the computer.
Will that follow them then through?
For K one, it will, and then they'll transition to six to back to the computer adaptive.
I see. Um, well, on, on the math, I'm kind of concerned with, you know, the third, the third grade numbers consistently across the district, and, uh, you know, it seems like we've got some, some issues at third grade. Do you have a handle on what that is, or what we can do to correct it?
Yes, um, can you talk to me more about what you're seeing, folks? When I look at that second page, third graders, district wide?
It's split by the class here, so it has the class of twenty, twenty-eight, um, I don't know, maybe or something.
So a drop from the year before.
Everywhere, like a significant amount in that, and it's not reflected in the numbers before that, and so I'm not understanding how that's possible, it doesn't make sense. Are they different numbers? Are they measuring something different? Because I don't know, you can have an overall, where you have third grade being like a drop of point two two percent, and then when it's split up by classes, there're seventeen, nineteen, eighteen percent drops. Seems sketchy math somehow.
Yeah, I, I know, but, um, reason or answer for you of this, um, just something we need to monitor and watch to see if it's indicative of that particular board or that grade level.
But how is that not reflected in the other charts, like where it says third grade?
Yeah, the other chart showed, uh, wrong.
Wait, oh, you're saying it doesn't match?
Yeah, well, the, the fast data for, uh, well, kindergarten, first grade, second grade, one point five two growth, one point three in RAM two, a dip in the RAM three group, and then a dip again in district wide of point two two, but when we look at the other page, it's like negative seventeen percent.
Right, because, so if you look at the other page, if you look at, so that first box, if you look at the fourth grade class, they have, in eighteen, they have thirty-two percent proficient, right?
Wait, sorry, which one?
So, fourth grade, fourth grade class of twenty twenty-seven in RAM one, in twenty eighteen, thirty-two, right? When they were third graders, right? So if you would compare that thirty-two to our current third graders, then it's thirty-two to thirty-three, so you see it increasing, but if you compare that to them going to fourth grade, so there's two different ways, and, and the second page, it's third grade, third grade, and this page, it's second graders who become third graders, or third graders who become fourth graders. Does that make sense?
So maybe it does look like that, there might be something in that code, or that's crazy, these numbers are.
Could be, but it's also the first time that we've looked at second grade moving to third grade, so it could be something that's happening in that third grade year that we just aren't quite matching up with what the test is assessing.
The curriculum, is the test measuring something differently than we're teaching?
Could be, could be.
A couple of questions that I had on the math test specifically was about testing what they're learning. So some of the teachers that I talked to, for example, fifth grade, they're maybe testing fractions at the beginning of the year, but they don't cover fractions until the end of the year, um, or even at the kindergarten level, I appreciate the switch to, uh, early math, because there's a lot of frustration with the teachers I talked to at the earlier levels about, like in kindergarten, they're talking about percentages, and they're like, they don't even cover that, so how are the kids supposed to know that, you know, coming in? Also, the amount of time that it took to retest or test, uh, the kids that needed monitor, progress monitor, that was very lengthy to do, um, weekly for some of the younger grades that had to do the math, so I was curious on that part two, and how it matches up with our actual curriculum that we're teaching.
To answer your fifth grade question, just because you haven't taught fractions in fifth grade doesn't mean the kids haven't been taught fractions, right? They've been taught it in second and third and fourth, all the way up to it, and when the kid gets to the test, it's adaptive, so if they're getting some fraction questions wrong, it's going to go back and, and ask easier fraction of questions. Does that make sense? So it's going to, again, assess a broad range of math skills, and because it's a standardized test, it's standardized against other fifth graders all across the nation who have taken the test at that time of the year as well, so.
So are these linked to standards? Is the Iowa assessment is linked to state standards, right? So this is kind of prepped and panel of students might be performing on that later assessment, is there, is there plus standards based ones, I think? So absolutely, grades K five for sure, we've got either four or five domains, um, that are sitting on four state standards, that's still in the Iowa four state standard, unlike Diane was alluding to, just because our curriculum hasn't taught fractions at that time of year, you know, this test is given nationwide, it doesn't mean another group or another curriculum source that's under the issue, saying hasn't done that, so the fact that it's adapted, I think, is important. It is, um, you know, if you could see, NCTM puts out an awesome, um, kind of graphic that shows, um, just even by those major strands, let's pick geometry for example, you wouldn't think that we're teaching geometry necessarily in kindergarten, right? But it's, it's a great graphic that shows, maybe in kindergarten, they're getting this much instruction around geometry, and it's almost like this is a learning area.
Yeah.
So that's the kind of thing it's trying to capture and look at.
Math, you know, math is building block, it's a, it's a universal truth, and if you don't have a grasp of those building blocks, and you go on, you're always going to be missing the fraction questions if you haven't nailed it. And that's where I'm concerned, is, is that, you know, are we lacking somewhere in the, just the basic knowledge in some of these areas that continue on? And, you know, it's, 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 you know, I understand what you're saying, you know, with, with, at kindergarten level, we're doing that, but are we really grasping the important, you know, the, the fractions and the, and the mastery and the skill of that, so then when we go on to something else, we're carrying that forward as well? Is there, is there a way we, you know, we, we can see if, uh, if, if that's part of the issue?
Yeah, that's a good question, but also, um, when I think about that, our multi-tier system supports, we have a universal screener that we give three times a year. When the kiddos are not proficient, then we are putting them to them in some sort of an intervention group matched to their skill deficit, so first of all, we, um, look at whether at grade level or, um, classroom at any one of our buildings is at less than sixty percent proficient, and if that's the case, then we want to go in during universal tier one core instruction and change up and give them a little bit different diet around what we're seeing happening class wide. So if we see that fractions is a problem class wide, we want to add that to our envisioned curriculum for that particular next unit to beef up that instruction, so that next time we go through that, um, assessment period in the winter, hopefully we're seeing an increase in those results. So not only would we be implementing a class-wide intervention, we're also looking kid by kid, and if they're falling out, providing an additional intervention for them. We are in the process of developing stronger interventions in math, and I think that you can see between, like, some of the bumps that we've seen earlier in the year two with using that assessment, that the work that we do with our IDS and principal group monthly, um, I think is translating into some improvement in those results. It's not certainly where we want to be, you know, given that, or except we're set with Iowa assessments or sixty-five percent with this assessment, certainly not where we want to be, but we continue to build a strong system of supports and try to, um, bring professional development back to our teaching group. One area of emphasis last year with the IDS principal group monthly was, um, a strong focus on the three-part lesson design of envisioned curriculum, so we can't intervene our way out of a core issue, and if we're getting less than sixty percent of our kids not proficient at any grade level, um, we can't just think that intervention, fifteen extra minutes is going to help that group, and that's why it's important for us to think about what we're doing back in the classroom during that whole instruction as well.
So, Amy, um, I, I see that our black and brown students made strides, um, they all showed an increase, but is there any explanation, and you know why it seems to be Hispanic and Latino students have did really well, I mean, they had double-digit growth, um, across the board? Do we know what influenced that, and why we can't sort of take whatever affected them to apply to our black kids that are still significantly below everyone else?
That's a, that's a great question. I think if we could ever isolate any one, two, three variables that we said, this is the absolute key to either an individual building or an individual circumstance, making great gains, we would try to harness that, model it, and produce it for everybody. I think, I can't remember, bits in the math, or bits in the literacy results, or you see schools having kind of outperform the other buildings even in their group, and so what is Lisa doing and her team doing? Do they have site training this past year? Was that the indicative piece? Did she take the envisioned three-part lesson that we were talking to them about regularly back to her team? Did they use TQ funds to have one of our two Mars teachers come out and spend a ton of time around number enumeration with particular grade levels? There's just item after item like that to say, it's so hard to isolate any one variable, whether you're talking about student group, a building, a particular grade level.
I mean, because it's throughout every single building group, though. So, I mean, it, to me, I, it has to be something. I know it's very hard to isolate that, but I would really love it, because, I mean, I don't know what resources you could use, because it's across every single group, and they all have double digits.
So much better now.
Yeah, so, I mean, that, that stands out, so.
Just as he'll stand out, so, yeah, how do you?
Yeah, I'm just amazed, like, what's going on.
You know, is it that they're more likely to maybe have language issues, and as the language improves, their math? I don't know.
Yeah.
How, how can you find that?
Yeah, I know that's really tough.
Research team to come in.
That's because, I mean, that's because they, they are showing huge growth, and we need to figure out a way to give those growths for our black and African-American students, because they are, I mean, they're making gains, but it's just not.
Not enough to close that gap in, in, uh, that fourteen, you know, twelve, I mean, that's the kind of work that probably would close gaps.
I would say, you know, one, I think, I won't speak for everybody, I think one of the reasons to have this report is just, is RAM an idea that works, or are we even targeting the right thing? And on a very general level, um, with, you know, only a couple of years of data, if you, you look just at total numbers from group one, group two, group three, you see a striation right there, right? The lowest scores in group one, and the middle score is group two, and the highest score is group three, so it tells you that there's a target there, right? And we, we're creating numbers based on FRL and a whole lot of other things, but I think one of the questions that Roy brought up when we're looking at the RAM model, when the numbers and stuff, is where do we use the actual proficiency numbers to help model that, not just FRL and stuff, and it's embedded in there, but looking at those numbers and that striation, it tells you that at least we're targeting it the right way. And then, to, for the most part, I think there's only one outlier, you see the biggest gains in group one, and the middle gains in group two, and the lowest gains in group three, that tells you that the whole idea of it of putting more people there, more resources there is going to help the problem, and it, so, you know, with a very small amount of data, it says that we're attacking in the right places, um, it's concerning to me to know that we can't put enough bodies in the rooms to make all the classes smaller to really start to seize the jumps, because it's going to be a pretty tight year, um, and future years, it's going to be pretty tight, and class size is going to be bigger than anybody at this table wants them to be, um, so I'm concerned that we're going to stall out just because we, we can't do what we want to do based on this model, right? We just don't have enough to do it, but it feels good that it seems that it was a, a well-targeted approach to get results, and we're seeing something, so I'm very glad about that, just wish we could throw about twenty more teachers in every building.
We'll also struggle a little bit making comparisons between last year and this year with the attendance on changes.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
Amy, how confident do you feel that the teachers understand what's being asked and what the scores mean?
In what regards?
In math. And one teacher, I say that they don't understand what's being tested necessarily, what, there's a benchmark score, and they don't know what's that saying, so I'm just wondering how confident the rest of the teachers may be in what they're actually seeing when they get that result.
So that's the first time that I've heard that, and I think that, um, that that's commonly felt, that we need to use our team of IDS and principals during our monthly meetings to have them feel better about what that assessment looks like. Last bridge offers tons of documents to help support that, and we certainly get that back to attention as well.
Yeah, and I'm just talking math, not the reading part, just math.
Appreciate that feedback.
Amy, I have a question, um, page two, um, just looking at the kindergarten cohorts from twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen in RAM one and RAM two, so there's a huge difference in those cohorts. Do you have any idea what's different? Do those kids come in, are we doing something different in our district preschool? Is there, is that just luck? That they're just different kids? Is there any explanation for how the kids are coming in that much more prepared? I mean, I know this is spring, so it's not entirely what they started out at, but clearly there's a huge difference there.
You know, it's just interesting, I, is it more familiar, familiarity with what's going to show up on the assessment? Um, it's really the first time, when I think about it, that our K two teachers are probably seeing the Common Core standards being tested somewhere, so is it just even that awareness that's being, oh, that's on the computer? Oh, yeah, we're serious about teaching these particular standards. If you remember, or I don't know how much background you have, but kindergarten in particular, the expectations that came out of Common Core math standards are just extremely high compared to what we've ever seen in the past, and so, and maybe, maybe there's a little bit of that, a little bit.
I'm not exactly sure either, we, I would hope it's that, you know, after having given the test for a year, the teachers do kind of understand, oh, I have to prepare my kids better for this, and they're working harder, or not necessarily working harder because they always work hard, but maybe working a little bit smarter, targeting the things that the kids are really going to need to know.
So are we teaching to the test at that point, or to the skill?
Well, if the test covered the standards, then we're teaching them to the standards. Another thing we've talked about, Paul, um, currently, when we report the scores, we report them as a number, so the benchmark might be three eighty-two, and you got a three eighty-two point five grade, you're above the benchmark, and, you know, this kid got a three eighty-three, and he's above the benchmark. Well, how much of a discrepancy is it between the point five and the three eighty-three, right? So what we're talking about doing, um, we can also report them as percentiles, so if I tell you that score your kid got was a sixty-second percentile, and this kid got a ninety-eight percentile, now all of a sudden, that tells you, I think, a little bit more. So we're talking about sharing that information with the teachers as well, to hopefully at least give them a little more, um, understanding of what that number is.
Maybe that's where the confusion, that part was.
Can we order the reading data, sir?
Yes.
I want to ask one more question about the math. So, um, what is, Amy, obviously you want huge growth, you want double digits more, but what do you consider success in growth?
Well, sir, we've been setting our benchmark, or just kind of our internal goal, at three percent each year for componental wrong goal, and then six percent for our suburbs, specifically by our students in color. And obviously, in, in, you know, the RAM group three, they're starting out much higher, so maybe your goal is a three percent there, maybe it's a three percent everywhere, or you say three percent everywhere, so you're helping pull everybody's point in the same direction.
Yeah, I'm concerned about the RAM group two, I'll just say, because it feels to me like, um, their numbers are a little more, um, they still have kind of lower proficiency numbers, and they don't have as big a growth. So, that reason.
And what do we do when we don't hit our benchmarks? Uh, we just continue to look at our data, plan the correction plans, you know, have a table that informs, you know, what we do at the district level, in a way PD offerings on Thursdays, PD offerings in addition to those Thursdays, that maybe teachers get some for, uh, in a way of maybe writing intervention training, uh, what our two Mars staff members might offer, um, and oftentimes, building principals will get some, split TQ dollars and a more stem ruling, so, I mean, and we are data-driven, um, and trying to continue to improve our MTSS system off years. For math, and for reading, and for social media, let's just start on, you know, we're, yeah, I shared with the teachers today, um, we're proud of where we're at, but certainly it's not utopia, and so, once you get these structures in place, you kind of have to build a, build a MTSS system, the one thing you need to go back and focus on is instruction, so what, with, how this, how can instruction look differently if we feel like everything else is solid, our assessments are solid, our curriculum is up to date in line with standards? We've set aside, um, time, we have guaranteed by the curriculum, that all students have access to, that will have all the protocols and procedures in place, to go back and focus on.
Think about, you know, like, when we saw the presentation in these schools, and with the A, and that model, I mean, and I know we want to expand that out, so could, you know, could we run a little, like, pick a group or a school that might model that? I mean, is that, you know what I'm saying, like, how, so how do we go from that sort of very successful, very intensive, like, video, feedback, and solve really great numbers, and obviously scaling that up to, like, every classroom, but, I mean, is that something we could do, or maybe we could do something a little bit differently in a school and see what that does? I mean, I just thought that was more of the more, you know, the data was great, right? And then the, the amount of work was also a lot, and the buy-in was, was also hadn't be there, and so I don't know if, you know, because if we're trying to kind of, I mean, I guess we're looking at different buildings, and then you guys will know what's going on in those buildings, um, I don't know, that's a thought.
That's a great suggestion, and I think about the GPK, I guess, that we have in place, with roughly about, kind of, four PK teachers, you see that ratio as being really desirable and helpful to accomplish what they did there, and when I think about, um, twenty-one, not even full-time, but most of them are, IDS, with three hundred fifty FTD across the district, it makes it a little bit trickier, not that we can't do something. So, speaking of instruction, we've been rolling out this past year, um, and speaking of literacy, something called the, um, small group blueprint, small group, uh, reading blueprint. Yeah, where we're really thinking about what whole group instruction looks like, small group instruction looks like, and putting different protocols and procedures in place, and this was developed by the Iowa Leading Research Center in collaboration with the D E schools, and so we've been back to our buildings, and the remaining elementary buildings will have that PB this particular school, but again, it goes to, um, to strengthening our MTSS system, and then focusing on what instruction can look like, explicit direct instruction, I mean, emphasis on phonics, if we can go over this at the earlier grade levels. But I do think it's key to think about this small group blueprint, and how the instruction that can occur around there, there are walkthrough templates that once the staff receives, um, that training, um, it's not a gotcha kind of thing, but it's just making sure that we're implementing that instruction with fidelity with what that. So literacy, we saw, um, what I would call our best year with our fast assessment results last, not this very last year, but the previous year, while we did have some highs in a few categories across our different RAM schools and for some of our subgroups, largely, just overall, we slipped back a little bit with that overall proficiency rate from seventy-five percent at our highest in twenty eighteen to seventy-three point seven percent this past year. Again, when I look at how well that aligns to Iowa assessments, during our seventeen, eighteen school year, we were roughly seventy-three point nine percent, so right in the ballpark, so this assessment is aligning itself to what we were seeing in Iowa assessments. And like Diane said, sometimes these universal, any sort of screener is supposed to catch, cast a wider net, um, of students maybe looking non-proficient, so that we're intervening quickly to close a gap right away instead of looking.
So this assessment is a little bit different than the, um, AMAT that Amy was talking about. We, we give two assessments in reading, um, we just started giving the A reading, maybe a year ago to everybody? So that isn't included in this data, this is the data, um, because I was able to grab it from the last four years of different reading tests that we've been given for four years, also through FAST, but it's given one-on-one with students, so in grades two through six, um, students have to read a passage, and the teacher listens to the student reading for a minute, and they mark how many words correctly they've read per minute, and they read three passages, and you take the median passage, and then you compare that to the standard for that time and that grade level. In K and one, there are four different subtasks that the kids have to do with the teacher, again, one-on-one, might be letter identification, might be sound identification, might be nonsense word reading, might be, um, sight might be nonsense word reading, might be sight word reading. But there's four separate tests, and then they get a composite score. And then that's compared to the benchmark. So I think teachers, when they compare maybe the AMAT to the A reading, they feel like, well, I sat with this kid, and I made sure. So I know what the test is, because I gave it to them one-on-one, and I made sure they were paying attention and did their best. So I feel maybe a little bit more vested in these results versus, I don't know, the kid sat on the computer and took the test, and I'm not even sure if they clicked through it, or I'm not even quite sure what the questions were. So maybe that also could be why they don't have as much confidence in the reading scores as they might, or in the math scores.
So you're saying the reading test is an actual text that they're given, or is it on a, it's on the screen?
Nope, it's on a paper.
Okay.
The, the student reads it from the paper, the teacher has it on the screen, and any word they get wrong, the teacher just clicks on the word, and then it calculates it for us.
Couple of questions on reading. So the feedback I got was that the lower levels, kind of the flip side, the lower levels were good for reading. Early levels and the higher levels tended to test more on speed, and how fast they could read, but it didn't necessarily take into account the whole picture. For example, one teacher said that it doesn't, it actually prevents kids from using expression, rereading for accuracy, et cetera. So I mean, I mean, that's a concern too, is it's, I feel like it's testing how fast a kid can read, and not if a kid truly understands what they're reading, or, you know, being able to read. I mean, some kids are really good readers, but they read slow. You know, some people read fast, and they still.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
It is timed, one-minute timed, yeah. Research has shown that, you know, the quicker a student can read fluently, the more they can dedicate to thinking. If they have to sound out every word and really think about every single word, then they aren't able to release that brain energy to think about what they're reading. They're spending so much energy trying to decode. So as the kids become more fluent, and they demonstrate that through reading quicker, then we know that they're more capable of comprehension. So there's a great correlation between how quickly you can read and your comprehension. It's a screen.
There's actually shown a little extra extended time, and it's all statistics from a performance perspective. And so, there's a whole big thing in the assessment industry right now. You know, we, we do a big thing around accommodations, and give students extended time, double time, whatever. Give every kid as much time as they need. And that's, and take the speediness component out completely.
So on the adaptive reading test, yes, that's what they get. They get as much time as they, they need, and that's why we're giving that test in addition to this. But again, you have to remember, this is just a screener. It's like going to the doctor's office, and he's going to take your temperature, he's going to take your blood pressure, he's going to take your height and weight. And from that, he can tell a little bit, and he might be able to say, oh, looks like I need to do some more digging, or, you know, you're looking pretty healthy here. So that's all we're doing with this. It's just kind of a wake-up call to say, it's a red flag, to say, oh, you're really struggling. I need to do a little more digging with you, and see if there's some things I need to work with you. Or, man, you're flying through this, you seem to be doing well. I think you can manage with the regular instruction that I'm going to give you.
But what if you put something? Sorry, are, are accommodating students in this population? So this is, okay. And so they would have had whatever accommodation they needed on this timed test? Would they have gotten extra time?
No, they wouldn't have gotten extra time, it would have invalidated their results.
The only students that would not be represented in there would be students who's, who are on an alternate DLA assessment. So students on alternate assessment, fewer than one percent are students with significant intellectual disabilities.
Oh, but so the student that would have, that would have an accommodation for extra time or whatever, would have tested without that accommodation?
Right, right.
I don't know, the size of that population, that could be a bit.
It could be up to ten percent.
So, so if a child doesn't hit the speed benchmark?
Yep.
But can, teacher can tell they can clearly read, and they understand what they're reading, but then they put in intervention because they didn't hit the benchmark? So now you're putting them in an intervention that they're not need to be in, just to try and speed their reading up?
And hopefully not, though. And what Diane was alluding to is that assessment is going to indicate there's something there. So in addition to that, we'll go back and further diagnose. So maybe the doctor sends you to the MRI or whatever from the initial health assessment. So we go back in at our earlier grade levels. We've got PSI or passive screeners that can get more to the specific skill set that they, they might be missing out on. So we do want to match the intervention with the need. Clearly, if they're only missing the benchmark by a couple, is probably perhaps not fluency, and maybe it's an issue of they need to understand how to decode multi-syllabic words. And so they're going to put them in a ninety-five percent group intervention specific to understanding what those different syllables look like in a code, and how they look brought together. So we try to further diagnose the issue once we see that. And remember that we don't necessarily put the kiddos right into an intervention group. The, kind of the protocol that we follow is over two testing periods. Be careful with that, right? Because we want to intervene right away, but our protocol will state that it has to be two consecutive universal screening periods that we would see that data fall off. You know, prior to having that K three, K I legislation in any other district that I've worked in, we would want to use multiple sources, multiple assessments to look at what that whole picture of the kiddo looks like. So your sum of assessments with Iowa assessment, your universal monitors that you're using, and diagnostic. But the rules kind of got rewritten on us in K three, where we're looking at just that FAST assessment. And so we tried to apply the rules that were introduced in our teaching staff as they went from grade level to grade level, and as well as up and down, and so we applied kind of the same rules and strategies. Having said that, the progress monitoring is set up for the kiddos. That fallout is non-proficient once a week in reading. But we did back off of that expectation, and we do it every other week in that. And so I know before we were saying that that progress monitoring from that can seem to take a long time, but we are only requiring that every other week from that.
Do you know what the benchmark is for spring, let's say, for a sixth grade student?
The number?
Yeah.
I don't have that off the top of my head, I can look that up. But the other thing to note too, is the passages are intentionally written below grade level, so that the students can read them fluently, and they can access them more easily. So we wouldn't expect a student to read a sixth grade passage at the same rate that they're able to read these passages.
Then my other question is, English language learner students? There was some concern, brought up through the bots, new, they found it was motivating for some students, at least tasks that gave them something to work towards, but newcomers sometimes it was a maybe a waste of time, or very difficult for them to not read any English, or not have a limited knowledge, and you're testing them on, so it's kind of frustrating.
So there's rules written to the FAST assessments, which want you to just stop the assessment. Doesn't make sense to move along. I get you first, do we don't want to put that in that situation? So as long as we're following the protocols and procedures in place, we can stop the assessment.
And then we also have, for those students, allow them to, for progress monitoring, select an assessment at a lower grade level. So if he's a third grade student, and he's not reading, instead of putting a third grade passage in front of him all the time, we could back off and give him maybe a kindergarten assessment, that is letter identification. And that is something that he should be able to do, and to start to see progress on. And then we just continue to kind of help him out.
So if they're in the lower level, they wouldn't be proficient in their grade?
No, they're still not proficient in their grade.
So is there any way to break that down even more into the, as opposed to just maybe black, or Asian, or Hispanic into what they?
Yeah, special ed.
I think they would be, yeah, that would be.
You wrote that out in ELL, I mean, if you want to then just go to the map. If that was up there. And is that just an easy thing to do, like click on?
Yeah, and we share that information with buildings through ELL. But again, that gets a little confusing because of how ELLs are coded. Once you are proficient, then you are no longer coded ELL. So it's basically the non-proficient kids, ELL kids are all, almost could be non-proficient, because once you are proficient in a language, then you lose that designation. So.
That's true for special ed? And, oh, so it's helpful. I mean, it's hard to include with all the factors, it's all, there's so many different factors.
You bet.
You gotta piece it through, and it is, it's tough. But I mean, you've got two years to date here, and that's, you know, actually, we're, I mean, we're in. And so, I mean.
Well, the trend, I think.
Yeah, it's good.
Are your benchmarks the same for reading, three percent, six percent?
Yeah. But speaking of FAST benchmarks, they have changed. So as they continue to watch what's happening nationally with the results, you know, they're popping up, or like, or I don't think, I haven't honestly looked at them. I'm guessing they didn't change their market group.
They, they bumped down a little bit.
Down.
So those benchmarks are just part of our district set? That's set by what, ESSA, or what?
It's set by the assessment.
FAST.
The FAST assessment. And they set it at the forty-first percentile, really similar to what we, our Iowa assessments had already, had always been set.
Amy mentioned at the beginning on the reading, there was a slide there from this last year. Is that global, is that where they bumped benchmark down?
Not yet.
Does that match?
So that hasn't happened.
Yeah.
Is that?
Those were the same benchmarks, so.
But is it because of this type of data more globally that they would lower it? Like, is it, is that slide being seen by much farther reaches than our school district?
I don't.
You know, because, I mean, it stands out, right? Looking at it, that slide between eighteen and nineteen. You know, like, have you looked into your crystal ball and figured out why that is?
Right.
It's curious to know whether that's isolated to here, or any more local thing with, you know, FAST assessments. I mean, operation, usually, you see gains, I mean, it balances a little bit, it's just created gains, and then it falls down there, pretty much across the board, right? It's like, so.
I would say it was because of all the snow days, that's all.
Numbers got, I, I think, there's got to be some sort of external factor that we're not seeing.
And I want to talk a little bit more about the subgroups. So I, I know it's a really old question, but what, what is working? What are you finding is working?
Well, I, there's so many variables, it's hard to say. So we, you know, when I made the laundry list before with math, I didn't even consider the RAN. So you've got program element, so we've got the small group blueprints, the instructional piece that we're offering, for what that reading time looks like, that whole ninety-minute block, or the hundred-and-twenty-minute block. You've got superkids that we were implementing K two in some of those RAN one schools as a pilot to begin with, where we're taking it up to a larger population this year. And next year, we'll have all twenty-one of our elementarys using the K two superkids curriculum. You've got more robust interventions in place with ninety-five percent group, having strong focus on direct explicit instruction around a nice sequence of foundational skills. You've got every month, IDS principal meeting focused on reading. We've developed something that we call our literacy framework, which when you think about the four PLC questions, we've tried to detail very clearly to our staff what, what we want all students to know, that, and that speaks to instruction, that speaks to the standards at every grade level. We've got the second question of how do we know if all students are learning? We've got all of the assessments that we've given for literacy detailed. And for three is what do we do if they haven't learned it? So we've got all of our interventions listed out there, as well as a flow chart that depicts if students are not making it in the current intervention. Couple of things to know, we've got the poll and our progress monitoring. What do those graphs look like on a weekly basis? Do we need to stop that intervention? Or before we stop that intervention, are we using that intervention with fidelity? We've got a flow chart and how to check through that. And then last but not least, if students are already making it, hitting their grade level standard, what are we doing to suspend their time? So we just continue to build around that strong MTSS system, curriculum instruction, professional development. And so what gets really hard to isolate any one variable, and even add a built-in level? We've got America or tutors in certain situations that some of our buildings.
And all the PBIS work, you know, you think just how much tied in the social emotional behavior stuff is tied into their ability to learn. So I think all the work that we've been doing in those areas too. So it's so hard for someone to say, is the RAN working? Is ADD working? Is superkid working?
Do you do any sort of polling or anything with your teachers to ask them? What do they think is working? And I'd be particularly interested in their subgroup thoughts, like, is there differences between what they see working here and what they see working there?
I'm not asking that.
Yeah, because maybe, you know, because you're teasing out, you know, we're not going to, the barriers, is to get some of that anecdotal stuff, and see if there's alignment there, where there's some common themes. Might, might be, you know, because sometimes you just have an idea bumps on the end, and it's like, well, no, I see, next one's here.
I tell you, the number one thing with TALI is five dots. Well, maybe that's.
I was going to say, that's the problem. I mean, there's things we like, that the research doesn't back up, that is actually the most effective. You know, some of the things that are the most effective are things we have a hard time leading change for practices to, to be adopted. And so, I mean, I think anecdotal feedback is important in, in how we implement change, and how we move forward with decisions. But I think we have to be careful with that, because sometimes, you know, what they think might be being effective isn't really what's the largest driver.
Low class size would think, you know, you know, be beneficial.
If you can get really low class size, research is effective.
Something Matt said this morning, and then Diane was talking about, what the teachers, Matt was talking about, making people have high expectations even when our kids are struggling, right? So we can't just lower the bar with expectations. So when Diane was talking about with her ELL kiddos, and, you know, it's really us wanting to make sure that we're not, we're providing instruction kind of that, that, zipping across zimmer development, right? That we're hitting, leading them where they're at, but trying to extend them so that they're growing. We need to close that gap for them. So while Diane said we might go in and do that for an ELL kiddo, or a specialized education kiddo, we still have the buildings monitoring them, the progress monitoring in two different ways. So we're always having a progress monitoring towards that end-of-year grade level goal, as well as maybe a goal that's a little bit more attainable. And so that choice doesn't happen too often. Buildings know to exercise that with extreme caution, because what we don't want to do is only ever use the one goal, because then we are sentencing them for sure to stay behind. So I think that's important as well.
Yeah, I would be interested, no, I hear you saying that, that, you know, you see it for what it is, but I would be interested in knowing from the teachers on the frontline, is, is this working with this group, or is that not effective? Maybe they, are they sharing that information with their principals, or is that?
I think their principals might ask some of the thoughts about that as well. Is there I T's, or is it?
I feel another thing over there, I want to ask your teachers, and that's Amy and Diane and team there over there. But one of the things we look at in terms of seeking out and getting feedback from any of our employees, is that once we put that out there, the expectation is that we do something with them. And so whether it's just as a check of understanding for us as the administrative team, we're really looking at what we're doing, what the teachers think is working. Kind of the Matt's point, it's, once we ask those questions, we can put that back in the bottle. And so even if we're just trying to make sure that we're going down the right path, it's sometimes difficult then to go back around to our employees and say, okay, we asked you this information, just see it up wrong there for what we, what we're doing, but we're really not sure what we're going to do with it. And why I bring that up is because we're trying to take it as an approach of how we're engaging our employees, an ongoing type of what do you want to see for employment? Where do you want to see your teaching going? Where do you want to see your work going? And so we're trying to be very strategic about the type of questions we ask, when we ask them, to make sure they stay engaged at a high level, and things that we can ensure we return on investment. An example where maybe we got a little ahead of ourselves, and it's really exciting, is when we're doing the work with Grow Your Own in our support staff to teach your pipeline. We have a lot of parents that continue to ask me, when are we doing that? When are we doing that? Which is awesome, but we were just trying to get a baseline, but it's a program that we're not launching for another fifteen months. And so it's, okay, how do we keep them involved? How do we keep them doing that? And so as we have these conversations, even though we've got some great tools to engage our staff. And so as we have these conversations, even though we've got some great tools to engage our staff, it's really picking and choosing, when do we do it? How do we do it and how are we going to best, best return on investment when we're asking those questions? That's more general than this, but I think it's, I try to be strategic about every time we start asking questions. I just want to make one last point because I want to kind of end on a happy note. One of the things that we've just sort of harped on forever, right, is achievement gaps, right? And it seems like there's not been a lot of gains there, but this one chart here, when you look at the difference between black students and white students in twenty sixteen, there was a thirty six percent gap. But twenty nineteen, it's now to twenty nine. So that's closing a gap that I think has been talked about for much longer than three years and has not closed at all. Plenty of room to go, but it's a gap that's steadily getting smaller there and that's something. So yeah, find out what it is, put it in the bottle. We'll sell that to everybody and they'll have plenty of money for whatever we want.
Have we, I've asked this question before, so just only stop it, Lori. But have we approached the school of education and asked them if they have a dissertation student or somebody that needs a project?
We know what the, what it reminds me of is what we've tried to do about Sarah Buck, the strike, doing a plus a bias project and seeing the impact and monitoring it that way. But I think that would be a great group to go to say.
Project score, take your pitch.
I think the, you know, one of the most important pieces of work you can look at is really by John Hattie, it's Visible Learning. And it talks about the, you know, most effective practices that we can do in the classroom, the high leverage things and, um, the things that make the biggest impact and the things that don't make the bigger impact. Because it's really about those practices that we put in place. And so you can have all the programs you want to, you can do all the different things, but if you don't commit to those practices, it's going to be hard to isolate, was it this program? Was it this individual curriculum, anything like that? And so, I mean, we could talk to you, that's some more, that's some of the work we do internally as a team and try to look at those things about are we committed to those practices? No matter what the name on the program is, because, you know, his research, you know, not to bore you with it all, but it's a huge meta-analysis of this basic thing about how do you isolate what works in education? What doesn't? Because most of the things we do work, almost everything works on some level, but we have to figure out what works the most because of how urgent like the gap Sean's talking about is.
Kids.
Yeah.
What's the name again?
It's Visible Learning by John Hattie. And what you really want to do is just flip to the back and look at the appendix where he lists out all the things. And say, these are the things I want to go to. You don't want to read all his other stuff, so.
The research is fun, but that's the.
No, it's good. Yeah, thank you so much. Can we do that with this conversation? We have a review of the mental health supports and. So let's talk through that.
All right, we'll transition to that. Hi, everybody. Laura Daley, Director of Learning Supports, and I think you all know, but just to make sure, Crane Frank, she is our Coordinator of Mental Health Services. And we have, um, we revised the handout that we have shared with you before, just added a few new changes and significant changes. But because we have been at the table and shared some of this overview before, we wanted to just highlight some of the mental health supports that we have in place and of course ask us questions as we go along. To start with, the importance of thinking about the Iowa's, Iowa's M T S S model and emphasis that we place on it as a district as well. That's first and foremost, where we want to have that strong universal core instruction and then additional layers for some students and for few, and the few students that need tier three. We implement that for social, emotional, behavioral and mental health supports through a P B I S framework. I think that's important to recognize that none of this is separate, that really students that have any type of a social, emotional, behavioral or mental health need, first and foremost, we want to make sure that we're providing that P B I S framework in the buildings. And of course, we have a variety of additional supports and services that we can tap into. But we want to make sure that it's not seen as something separate, that mental health issues are separate. And yes, they need to be, we all need to know our kids and be aware of what may work and what, for certain students. But we also, as we implement an M T S S system that adds for efficiency, there's use of data to make decisions. And we don't have time to necessarily look at each kid individually initially in the process. So that's why we start with universal supports for all and we add layers for some and then for few. So just a quick overview of kind of a conceptually thinking about that M T S S framework. We also know that implementing supports in the educational environment is all about the adult behavior and adult learning. It's just what we're talking about, the whole sense of self-efficacy. And the more we can do to increase our adults' ability to provide a safe supportive environment for all of our students, that creates that safe supportive environment and makes it more predictable for kids in classrooms. So we just added some emphasis about the importance of, you know, relationship building, you know, supporting adult learners, providing ongoing professional development. And then when we think about some of the personnel that are specifically helping our educational teams in the buildings to make some decisions about helping students and families access some mental health services. Have an overview, certainly it takes a team, but our school counselors, we have school counselors in each of our buildings, student family advocates, same thing, we have at least one student family advocate in each building. And our school nurses who have a presence and provide support in each of our buildings. And then we have a summary of some of our additional programs and services, some at the elementary level, some are K twelve. And some, some of these services are on a limited basis. As we've talked about before, they aren't necessarily appropriate or accessible for any and all students. Some of the supports are really geared specifically toward a limited number of students that have a particular need or that would most benefit from. We have a variety of active partnerships and resources that provide either direct services for us or that we consult with on a regular basis. And a variety of professional development opportunities. You may, you probably are aware of the Department of Education's required training for all certified K twelve staff this year for suicide prevention and post prevention training, as well as mitigating toxic stress and learning about ACEs, the Adverse Childhood Experiences Syndrome. And so all staff will receive that training yet this year. And we are exploring additional partnerships. We did start a universal screening pilot just at a few of our elementary buildings last spring that we're going to continue throughout the course of this year to determine how to scale that up as time goes on. One of the interesting things we're doing with our ongoing P B I S training this year with Grant Elementary and Hoover Elementary, they're revisiting their tier one systems and supports. Just new staffs, new groups of adults that are coming together, of course, in those buildings. Grant, you know, they're not quite sure how everything will work in the building yet in terms of common area procedures, what their student expectations are. And so that's been really beneficial for their staff teams to come together. And through that experience, we are also embedding trauma-informed practices. So it's really our first intentional infusion of the P B I S, P B I S framework with the trauma-informed lens. And so far, the feedback that we've had from the staff teams that are part of that have said that it's really a nice enhancement and it's adding to their learning and understanding of providing supports to students. We are, one of the new things that you'll probably hear about as the year goes on is Crane actually wrote and applied for the STOP grant through the Department of Education. So each of our three comprehensive high schools received the grant. And so that means that they will have a building leadership team that attends some school violence prevention and mental health training to learn and enhance their learning. And then they can take it back to their buildings and work with their staff. And then a really neat part about it is that there's a peer or a student component of that where the mentors in violence prevention and V P, if you've heard about it, a lot of other districts in Iowa have it at some of their secondary schools. That's a student group that will also attend the training and learn about how they can become peer mentors to help identify behaviors that may be at risk in terms of how to report it. And we all know that student voice, you know, students, students helping students and teaching students, particularly at that age, really has even more of an impact than sometimes what the adults can do. So we're excited about that. We're learning a little bit more about how, what the grant will, how it will work and how it will support and what the training will look like. But we've got, you know, some broad strokes figured out so far. So that's a really exciting thing that's happening.
Lori, just, I'm sorry, one quick question. Why just for the three comprehensive high schools? Why not K two?
Because it, the grant was for comprehensive.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. It was just for, okay.
Yeah. And then we had, I'll just stop there since I'm kind of toward the end of the handout with some of the programs and services that we've highlighted. But let us know what questions you have. We wanted to just give a general overview. We know most of you have seen or all of you have seen this information before, but let us know where your question is. We can, we can talk more about maybe why you put this on the agenda and what we can do to kind of fill in the gaps in addition to some of the things we've talked about before.
I'll start, because I just had one quick question, because it's definitely not my area of expertise. But I hear a lot, you know, in emails and people coming up to the board table and talking, and they're using the phrase de-escalation training, right? And I'm just trying to figure out where that fits in. I know there's specialty components and there's mental health part, but it's talking about it in the way that we don't do it and we're just disciplining kids, right? That's, that's kind of the feel that I get. And then just wondering, I assume that we have some sort of de-escalation training, but I don't know how widespread that is, how important that is, you know, just where it fits into both things. That's, that's the one piece I would like to know a little bit more about.
Sure. Lisa might be able to answer that better just because of the safety care training that she helps oversee.
So I oversee safety care training. You might hear it called Q B S training. It used to be through C P I, which these are all company names basically. And it's provided to Janet Special Ed staff. I just happen to oversee it for the district. But last year we switched from C P I to Q B S exactly for that reason, because we really felt like Q B S safety care offered much, much stronger verbal de-escalation. Actual protocols that they, that we train staff with that is aligned to the function of the behavior or the reason that it's happening to begin with, which is really much more helpful for staff. And also decreases the likelihood that we're actually going to promote the behavior. You know, whatever we do in response to a behavior will most likely either promote it or help to extinguish it. And, you know, what, what we saw in casework is that we actually were verbally trying to de-escalate students, which only seemed to be escalating them more. Well, that's because we didn't teach very specific techniques and it wasn't meeting the need of that student at the time. So we've seen much better, much more success and gotten a lot of feedback from staff that they really, they really enjoyed that. The Q B S training requires demonstration of those skills in order to pass. You can't be certified unless you with your trainer have to actually demonstrate the competencies. So it's really strict. So that way we know for sure we have people trained enough. Now, we were trying to get a whole bunch of people through training, send them out, okay, now go do this. Well, this is, this is a high level skill. We're trying to teach to people. It really didn't make sense and they really weren't trained enough to be able to do it. So we have about a Q B S trainer almost for every single building, which means that these people are onsite, you know, there are a couple of buildings that share that are really small buildings, but much more available for help, troubleshooting, you know, we keep having this recurrence, you know, with a student, we're not sure what we're doing wrong. Somebody's immediately available to help with that. That's also been received very well. It's a one to ten ratio in training, so it's pretty high quality.
Are you looking to train more folks, say more than one person per building or backup or send them out or?
So we have, these are the trainers.
Oh, trainers.
Yep. So we, we also have some district level trainers. Right now, I think we're sitting at about nine, eight or nine district level trainers who also, because of the ratio required, we have to partner up with the building level trainers and we deploy people all over the place. The same ratio is required in only verbal de-escalation. So any teams, all buildings have a Q B S team. Those teams that, you know, receive the full training, of course, get the full verbal de-escalation. But there's a way to train your entire staff only on the verbal de-escalation. But it's really resource intensive and worth it. But because of that, there's kind of a, it's an ongoing project that we have to work on all the time. And not every building feels that their entire staff needs it, but some buildings have requested it for their entire staff. And so we're deploying our people throughout the school year to do that. So that was a long answer to a short question. Did that?
Well, at the very end, because of what I was getting, going to ask was, is it all staff or party staff? It sounds like it's going to be very building specific based on what they feel their needs are.
Yes.
So just to give you a flavor, across the twenty seven or twenty eight tennis centers, building teams are, that get trained in Q B S. Me, might range from five to twenty employees depending on the building size and or student population needs, okay? And then from there, in our Thursday P D kind of menu that building principals can go in and pick from, there's a whole host of professional development opportunities around social, emotional, behavioral, mental health supports. And this de-escalation is one of those components. Another popular one that you might hear about is behavior basics. So those are two things that the building principal, maybe along with the I D S and or I L T is kind of figuring out what to plug in on those Thursday. As long as, as well as maybe ELL offerings or any conference or not conference, but it's one in a million. So if you had to go and ask for building principals, you know, which buildings have had the de-escalation training? Last year was the first year that we offered it. I would say maybe three or four elementarys of that have, I guess, did it last year, so I'm not sure.
I'm not sure about that. Several. When principals request it, we try to get the trainers out to the right places to be able to provide it. Sometimes we're talking to principals about, is this the best first step for your building? Or is there, you know, would one of the other options that are consistently available be a better fit for your staff? And sometimes we know that based on information, we know that we should ask that question based on information that we have at the district level. Or sometimes really they just didn't realize that the other things were options. I think one of the things that we really want to make sure that people understand would be the amount of professional learning that is being supported right now in the entire area of S A B M H. That's what we lovingly call social, emotional, behavioral, mental health. It's, it's like one word. Because we really can't pull all of these things apart. They're so intricately intertwined for most students. And honestly, you know, we've had, had this sort of almost advisory group going with them. With, it's kind of a wide group, but it includes some of our University of Iowa partners. Since then, we've even expanded to some other groups affiliated across the state. Even a group that we are now joining and belong to that's advised by the Mental Health Technology Transfer Center out of the Monroe Meyer Institute. So, I mean, all of the right experts are all saying that same thing. Stop trying to put these things into buckets. It's all one, one big interrelated ball of rubber bands. We can't just treat one thing. We have to, you know, I think there's been a lot of thinking that we have a behavioral approach and then we have mental health.
we have a behavioral approach and then we have a mental health approach. That used to be true, although I would say we're, we're really just breaking down those walls, which has been really helpful. And doing it in a way that also acknowledges possible trauma and all of these little pieces restorative in nature. All of these little pieces that, you know, we've, we've had kind of floating out there in the air, we're really trying to bring together, even across departments, I think. That's the way behavioral mental health has been everywhere, you know, these kind of silos. And so we're, all of our training now, which is extensive, are, we are trying to integrate all of that information with.
And that, I guess that's what I'm, because I know the list, right? And that's what I'm interested in is our district MTSs model for our staff in how they come to understand what these things are and, and what does that look like? You know, with all of our schools on board, so are we getting away from like disciplined advantage? And are we getting into more restorative things? Or are we having our teachers make sure they greet every single student as they walk in in a room? You know, some of this stuff, that's universal. And so, I don't know, is there a way, not to do this or promote work, but is there a way we could see, I don't know if it's visually or through data, where are we, where are we at now with that process? How, you know, what is every student getting and then what do those tiers look like? And then how, and then I would love to understand a little bit about scale as we move up to the tiers, right? And so obviously without getting into identifying information, but for people to understand how, you know, hopefully we'll learn and understand how important the tier one stuff is. But then as we get to the tip of the triangle, does everybody understand how many kids attempt suicide in this district here? Or how, you know, how many folks are reading that tip of the triangle? And then again, being super careful with data, right? I mean, this isn't stuff, you know, there's lots of privacy things involved. There's lots of issues where maybe families don't want the district to have this information. And with respect to all that, but I have some idea of, of where we're at right now and then where we want to be. And then what can we do as a board to kind of support that, you know, as we move forward with, obviously money, yes. We all know that. But is there a way we can get creative with, you know, policies, statements, trainings? You know, are you identifying places where there's overlap where we can maybe clean that up so we're not duplicating efforts? And just kind of, I guess that's what I'd like to understand is how, because what I know is this is a ton. And also that it's not enough. And it's not that I don't know that it's enough. We need to add another psychiatrist or that sort of a thing. But just to kind of understand, you know, where are those gaps? And is it buildings that, that are getting it and they're with it and we have to get all the buildings on board? Is it, you know, for you guys to figure out individual staff members that are, you know, that don't understand? Because, yeah, not everybody can get the de-escalation training, just logistically speaking, right? We're not, I don't know that we can capture that. So I guess that's, and not, because I don't, you know, not to go through this super long list and try to compile that. But in my head, I guess that's what I want to know, how that triangle looks for our district? And then what do we need to do to make it smoother and, and it seems like the tip of the triangle, there's some, you know, we know a bit, you know, if a kid is an outlier like that, it's like, okay, this is obvious. It's, I think it's that tier one stuff where maybe we're missing some things that aren't that obvious. And by intervening at that time, we may divert, you know, really help everybody. And, and with the trauma thing, you know, somebody brought this up to me. She said, you don't be careful with that because, and this was a person who said, don't treat every black kid that's traumatized. And, and that sometimes that trauma thinking is like, well, there's something wrong, you know? But at the same time, I know there's some benefit to, you know, just having empathy for everybody, right? So I guess for me, from kind of social, emotional, behavioral, mental health to understand, because with, you know, we do it really well with the meeting, we've got our, you know, and the data is cleaner, easier and now is private. And is there a way we can get there with some of this stuff from, you know, so with this, you guys can come to us at down in the middle and say, here's where the goal was, here's kind of where the gaps are. And then maybe we can get more targeted. So we aren't, because, you know, people do, you know, a lot of our feedback comes from really uninformed folks, right? But they're very passionate and they have really compelling stories. And then you're like, wait a second, what, what the heck's going on? And so I think would help us and also to explain to the community exactly how that looks for this district. You know, this is what we can expect. Everybody kind of goes through and our, you know, so it, and so I don't know, like PBIS or in here it says guidance counselors do like individual small group. Well, I mean, my experience was if you have 400 kids, like the time, like the logistical time in your day to do something like that is not very realistic or there, do we provide the space and the time for people to do that? So I guess that's obviously not the answer now. But that's sort of, those are all my kind of big questions of how we can see what's going on here and be able to explain to the community in a way that's super accessible and debunk some of the, you know, or if people have a specific thing, we can say, that doesn't sound right. It doesn't seem like that should be happening. And, and we'll tell somebody about it and they can look into it. Is that?
Yeah, I have an idea for you already. Because, you know, the, the students that I'm usually talking about are the ones with the most need. That tippy top of that MTSs triangle, which is, you know, that they also depend on the rest of the triangle. So if all they get are tippy top services, that's about 95% of their instructional diet they're missing. So the whole thing is important for them. But I can tell you that we've drastically increased services for that portion of the population that have the most need. And you will see that reflected in the special ed deficit, the special numbers. We've added three special ed social workers and I think eight behavior interventionists. So, I mean, these people cost money and we, we're not cutting back, you know, we're not able to cut back services in other places. So, you know, that, a lot of that is not Medicaid billable, so we won't be getting reimbursed for them. But, you know, these are the students that need the most help. And we didn't have the right people with the right training, with the right, you know, working and the right capacity to really be able to help our teachers, help them meet their needs. And so that, that's what they just, we just implemented more and possibly different types of people. And we've added them.
And those, those staff, are they ICCSD staff or are they candidate?
No, there are, they were.
There are.
Yeah, graduate ADA staff have, have a certain purpose. And a lot of it is around their obligation and code for entitlement. So their, their staff do what they have to do according to code. These are people who work under our direction. And we've, so I keep pointing at Green because we've been working to get some of these people hired and a good model built for what are they going to do? Because just throwing people at it, it's not going to help. We need to make sure that we've got them doing, providing the right kind of support. So, you know, we're working on all of that. I mean, it takes, it takes a lot of time. But, but these are the students we already know need help. We don't need a screener for them. Yes, we're doing screening. Yes, that's great. These are the kids, there's no question. There's no question. We know they need help. So we've actually increased our, our services a lot. The QBS training is, is expensive and works way better for the students that we're talking about. The stakes are high in these spaces. They're, they're the students that, there, there are devastating consequences to not serving the law. So I think we are looking at that and not just, you know, in a one night report. I mean, it's ongoing every day that we look at that information.
And now talked about practices, you know, what are some of the practices? That's kind of what you highlighted on too JP. And so, you know, just to give an example, we, as we've increased our emphasis on the adult learning and really learning about, you know, positive behavior implementation. One example is we use some of our dropout prevention funding this year over the summer for our school teams to meet and to really have time to implement their action plans. So sometimes that's what we found from feedback and some of the data through our PBIS processes and learning is that, yeah, we can come up with the things that need to be done that would support students, but that the school leadership teams maybe were struggling with really implementing those action items. And so this summer, about 90, almost all of our buildings, K-12, took the opportunity to bring their leadership teams together, work on the implementation of their action plans and what that would look like from day one, starting the school year out. And one example of that is City High, for example, among the other action items that they started was making emphasis and a goal of greeting all the students at the door this year. You know, and that is one simple, a research-based practice that helps establish that positive climate. That's a universal support. That doesn't take a lot of professional development to implement that, for example. It takes, you know, strong leadership and a collective commitment that here's how we're going to do this. Our kids deserve this. They deserve to be greeted at the door, to have a welcoming environment, for example. West High worked on establishing their behavior expectations and they made some cool new signage and posters for the building and how they're going to implement that using some of their student leaders to help teach that as well. They made some videos. And so it's just, it's a matter of making sure that they have the resources and the, and the time. But it really takes that building leadership. And from our district perspective, the last couple of years, we've noticed that it also takes a couple people that we have now that are solely dedicated on really focusing on helping buildings with their universal implementation, tier one, adding on those layers of tier two and tier three. So we could provide some more of that information in the future. You kind of mentioned a lot of different things, but, you know, to, to be able to maybe break it down into what are the systems, the practices and how are schools using the data to make decisions?
Yeah, yeah, just kind of, yeah, again, I'll have to put more work on it. I know you guys are doing that. But something like knowing that, right? Like, oh, say hello and, and every, you know, just understanding. And that's different at every school, but I guess, and then for us to be able to see the, the growth as a district as we're implementing all these things, you know, I, I don't, I'm not anywhere near to get there. I know we're done. But just so that we know, okay, this is where we're moving and we have confidence to go. Say, you know, this is the direction the district is going in and that we as a board are supporting.
So when Susie Colton stepped kind of down and away from her director role and more of a crowd over and having more of an emphasis on the social, emotional, behavioral, mental health piece as well as ELL and then Lucy coming into the district and more controls work, runs restorative practices and applies the bias, we are making some pathway and we're super excited to share. I know that our behavior data isn't the end all be all. It's not giving that some of the higher tier three or spent kids that we're talking about tonight either, but both our officer girl, girl data as well as our suspension data is down K-12. So it's exciting to see that and some of our labor and starting to see that in those laws.
And is that, and I don't know, we, you know, we asked you to do this in the work session. There's, that is something we, like, when do you remind me? Like, do you present?
That's in those teaching and learning reports.
Okay.
Come in this one.
In the fall, right.
Yeah.
Can you talk more about the substance abuse intervention services that we offer? Not only at the secondary level, but what type of education are we providing to our K through six kiddos so they don't end up on the path where they need actual substance abuse counseling? Just give us a little bit more meat to what we're doing now.
Yeah, our K six counseling curriculum probably has some of that embedded, but to be able to say exactly the grade levels and what the content is, I would, I could find that out. I can't really recite that off the top of my head. But our health curriculum too, which is a little bit more in Diane's department as a curriculum director, covers some of that as well, the junior high, you know, in some of the coursework at the junior high in the ninth grade health class, I believe. But the scope and sequence of when it's taught and what exactly is taught, I don't, I don't have that information right here with me tonight. We could get it.
Yeah, I would, I would just like to see that. I know we've had emails and concerns about drugs in our school and just wanted reasons why it would be helpful to have.
Sure.
Police officers in our school. So I really want to know what we're doing to not only address some of those kids that are presenting with those problems, but trying to ensure that we don't send kids down that path. We're providing them with that early intervention, those educational services. And to make, just to make sure we're doing something and not leaving until we have them presenting and not just that they hear about it in ninth grade and then don't hear about it again until, I don't know. I mean, thinking about my daughter's educational journey from K through 12, I remember she signed a contract, I think in sixth grade, that I won't do drugs. Didn't talk about it again until ninth grade. Just heard coming home saying, oh yeah, I remember we took that pledge, but yeah, really nothing else. On how do we help a friend, have those conversations with friends that we know that are drinking or starting to smoke cigarettes or doing other destructive behaviors surrounding substance abuse. So I would really like more information on what exactly that is and how early do we start?
Sure.
And the consistency throughout the years.
And on that, I don't know, just in general, what we do for social media. Is that such, such a thing? And how do we help kids navigate that? Or, you know, I don't know if it's with cell phones in class or if somebody said they're vaping in class, which I don't, I don't want to believe that, but I would, shh, 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 drop, but vaping. And now again, just the parent, you know, but it's vaping in class. So, but to me, again, social media is, you know, well, along with substance abuse, sometimes ends up being just as destructive or gets, gets down sex trafficking, okay? And I don't know if that's, I mean, we weren't really directly teaching that when I, you know, five years ago. So I don't know if that's something that is covered. Again, it's probably a curriculum question.
And along the same lines, other things that we've heard about, positive interpersonal relationships, whether that be warning signs to somebody in an abusive relationship, sex trafficking. What are we doing for our kiddos to educating them about the dangers of, I mean, what's presenting in our community and just across the nation? How are we trying to help them to navigate those safe relationships in when maybe something may not be safe? And having that conversation with parents as well, helping to educate them on, I mean, we can't do everything as a district. We need to work with our parents. So what are we doing to help educate our parents as well about those same issues?
Well, to that, yeah, that's, that's very good. And to that end, and the one that I wanted to bring up is student family advocates. We've got one in every building. And yet we have gentlemen, or people come to our meetings, parents that disengage, you know, really feel connected to the district and want to hear this evening. And I spoke with before the board meeting and he just wanted a phone call from somebody. Says, I've been calling here and no one's called back. I said, I gave you my phone number, call me. I never really got to the root of what his concern was. But, you know, he, he definitely didn't feel like he was being heard. And I've had community members come, one that has left the community, Henry Harper, who's been recognized by the Cedar Rapids in the State of Iowa African American Hall of Fame for his work with students. And, and he was always saying that family student advocates fall short of really getting that, that parent involvement with the schools. And, and we need to work. And we've discussed ourselves, how do we get parents involved and connected? And we've got to push. And one of the big things for Henry was, is that, you know, a lot of that work can be done in the summer. I know that, you know, and maybe we should look at just the whole structure of that position. There's a lot of work that can be done in the summer going with the families. And if they work a, a day schedule and the parents work night, you know, and we don't match up with their schedule and they have free time, you know, we have to meet them when they're available. So.
I'd say parent engagement is the role of, of all of the educators.
No, I, I agree. I, 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 I don't dispute that at all. But we've, 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 we've always talked, you know, we've got big sections of our community that we're not getting to fill out surveys. You know, we had the survey discussion and we had, how many people? 30 or we were, or the.
I don't know. I can't remember which one.
Right.
I never talked about, but I can't remember.
Right. We did this last work session, we had a discussion on the survey that we had.
It was comprehensive.
Twenty, right. Very, very few responses to it. And, you know, it's, it's, I know it's a challenge and that, but we've, we've, we've got to, we've got to address it or we're always going to have.
Fill to that, I mean, I guess that's, so if we're wrapping around, right, what do with our MTSs, then where are the? And that's, so who are we missing? And we know we're missing communities of color. And what we've heard is, you have to, you have to come to us, you have to come to our events. We can't go to your school, not because we don't care, because we work second shift. And so I guess as a board, my question is then, then what do we need to focus on to have the biggest impact for that? Because if it's changing structure, like that's something we can do. If it's year-round school, that's, those are discussions we can have as a board. So we're not, because I know what it probably feels like, and I know what it feels like I'm asking. Could you guys do more? And just, could you keep doing more and tell us more and? But some things that we're not talking about, things like the structure of our school day, the structure of our school year, maybe some big ideas, you know, year-round magnet, or things where we can start to have some impact. And maybe it's that we don't do everything and it isn't that we do everything the same at every building, but what are we doing around the district and then for, as a board? So then where are the gaps? And so what can we do to say, you know, because something like year-round school is a big community discussion that a board would have to have and need a lot of community support and take a lot of discussion of why we would need this. And if that's something we can identify, as we're getting everything streamlined and here's what we have, here's what we need, that might help need us, because we have these discussions going back two years and we don't do work on it because there are so many other pressing needs. And maybe it is that we have to start thinking outside of these boxes that have been placed into the last 200 years. And that is something I think the board can do that might make it so it doesn't feel like we're always, because we are doing a ton of great stuff and way more than we ever did. And it's far more coordinated than it ever has been. And, and then so what, what's, what is the missing piece, especially that we can provide in the board to that?
I wonder if you could talk a little bit about universal standards and what you guys are thinking on that? Are those cons? Sure, Sam, if you have any.
Do you have a question?
We, at four elementary schools, last spring, we administered the, one of the Department of Ed approved social emotional behavioral screeners. And Karine worked with our counseling coordinator at the time and building administration, a couple ideas, student and family advocates, the counselors in the building, just to provide them training so that they understood the reason for the screener, the, how it was going to be administered, make sure that we had parent, you know, proper parent notification. And we just use that kind of as a baseline to try to establish, see how the process would work and what information we would lean from it and how to scale that up throughout the course of the school year. It is something that probably eventually our Department of Education will expect of all schools. And so we're, you know, conceptually in support of it. We just wanted to start small and start at the elementary level where our teachers were already accustomed to implementing screeners, as we have talked about a lot tonight. And so some of the takeaways, what were the key pieces? I think Karine can kind of explain a little bit more. There was a good match between what the teacher rating was and what the student rating was, because depending on the age level, the teacher completes the screener rating and then so do the students. You know, for example, but.
What ratings did you do?
We did just fourth graders in four elementary to really understand, so we could, you know, who was given it, how, just really have a think. I would say the biggest takeaway is that all the buildings were like, we need this and we want to do it now. We want to do it K six and we want to do it three times a year for the rest of the year. I mean, almost without hesitation, which is really exciting, but we have to take a minute to decide then how we're gonna align it with the other screening tools and really make sure they're looking at the whole child and making sure the teachers have the support, the building has the support. And I think one of the biggest pieces is how we then share information out with parents in a systematic way that really values the information we're taking from the students. So really exciting, lots of energy around it. And now it's up to us to kind of decide how we take it and whether we're intentional about using it as a tool we want to drive decision-making.
But it's one of those initiatives that, sure, we could dive in and do it everywhere and let the teachers know, hey, we're gonna do this, but I don't, I think if we're, if we, if we're more intentional about it, about scaling it up, it will actually inform our instruction and our learning environment much better than if we just started it without really caring about implementation.
And data protection and then opting in or opting out and options. Yeah, wow.
Can I get in mind of our timeline that you're thinking of as you think about these things?
Well, yes. So we're just now.
More, more.
We're just now connecting with, with some of the changes, right? So, so those four buildings that we did it in last year are not the same, same buildings, but there's different leadership or there's different teachers at those grade levels and there's different students in those schools. And so we're just thinking through how some of the attendance zone changes could just affect that. Nothing significant. It's just that we've got to make sure that, for example, one of the schools where we implemented it last year has had a principal move to a different school. So, you know, the validity of the data, because we kind of wanted to look at the spring last year data and then just see how it includes to go.
I think we can probably send this year, so.
What, what you said?
I think we can probably send one link with attendance.
Well, there we go.
Here, Cole.
One thing, I was thinking through more and I haven't cut down for Karine to talk about this, but through our PDIS, tier one, tier two, and tier three rollo, we've been promoting and teaching certain tier two, tier three interventions. So checking, check out, checking, check out, modify features, check in, connect, stage groups. And so with the data that they saw that this particular screen was able to get back to us, do we feel like those set of interventions are sufficient and/or if not, what else do we need to look for? So I think we also have to, we want to be prepared that we're not just screening kids and sitting.
We had a group of council, elementary counselors do a summer curriculum writing project where they took a look at our current Sage lessons and tried to align it to our universal social emotional learning curriculum to make sure there's alignment with all of that, see where there are gaps, what we could do to enhance that. Because the importance of, just like you were talking about with math and reading instruction, your core needs to align with, you know, what you're teaching in those interventions as well. So Sage is social academic instructional groups and that's just, you know, another acronym in education for these lessons that are evidence-based to teach either social, small group, social skills, organizational kind of school executive functioning skills and, oh, study skills.
And relationships.
And relationships. Yeah. And so the.
Like guidance counselors kind of do that as a tier two?
That is a layer on top of the lessons that guidance counselors do. So that's for the some kids. So some students who need additional instruction on top of the social emotional learning curriculum, our elementary school counselors are providing that instruction. Yeah.
I just have one comment and one question. So my one comment you've already heard when we went through safety committee meetings, but all very student-focused. What are we doing for our staff?
Interestingly, this morning, I'll give you an example of that, our elementary principal and IDS meeting, our PDIS K-12 facilitator, Allison Frey Tag, did a nice presentation of a variety of things, of all things PDIS, and really emphasized the importance of self-care and has a leadership calendar that includes, what are you doing for your staff? What are you doing for your staff? And has activities or ideas for ways to support staff and promote their own self-regulation, their own competencies as well in terms of making sure that, you know, they're, they have some time to reflect also. Laura Gray also did a really nice job this morning, just in terms of some of the things that she presented. So we're trying to work with our building leaders and model some of the short little bursts of professional development that they can infuse at staff meetings, at, you know, Thursday PDs, have, have opportunities to do that. Things that doesn't really take a lot. It's just that as educators, we may not have, that's probably why you're asking the question, have it ingrained into our everyday practice. We also have, Karine has worked with a couple of the schools last year that, you know, went through some really horrific experiences with the loss of staff members. And we've connected with Synchrony, our employee assistance program too, and they can provide some resources and support too. So kind of that gamut of preventative, proactive, engaging staff together, as well as, you know, on the other extreme of, you know, really when staff need some grief counseling or support. So those are some things that we're doing. That's a key component of the PDIS framework, is it's not just about the students. It's what are you doing for your adults, adults as well? And then those action items in their action plan, they're supposed to say, here's our staff plan for this month, here's our staff plan for next month.
I can also tell you that restorative practices are being implemented with staff. I've seen that done really well in several buildings. We've done several departments, restorative circles. People, I've had a really good reaction from staff to that kind of thing. I mean, people are feeling like, it was good. They actually voluntarily come because they really enjoy it.
That says everything. And they're there.
It's just a restorative process.
Well, I, you know, I love everything here. I mean, it's all, you know, that's a practice and it's all evidence-based. It's, it's exciting stuff, you know? I mean, I think we also live in times where it's, you can't deny we need this. You know, we can't just do things the same old way.
My follow-up to the staff part of it was, you mentioned being proactive and preventative, so just as a district, you watch as an admin team, you have elementary schools that are changing populations and you have schools that are now sharing a principal, or you know, there's gonna be some really stressful situations already happening, short staff, you know, things of that nature coming in. So just is it like top of mind and awareness? And you're kind of watching out for those things? I mean, I've had discussions with Steve about staff placement. Now, like, teacher, like, where do I have a class? Where am I going? You know, it's very stressful before school starts. So is there top of mind, top of stuff right now?
Especially at the elementary level, that's a big part of our level meetings of the elementary principals. You know, we've learned a lot. I talked today with our new teachers about our growth pains at Alexander and how you blend two families, if you will. We brought kids together from Twain and Wood and the learning experiences that came from that. So I would say it's definitely top of mind with our team and certainly with our administrators at the elementary level, who are stressed out about changes to the attendance areas.
I think about our elementary roadmap and some of the buildings kind of having that forecast and maybe there's due population changing while others kind of come out in November, December, right? And so being in a long fellow, we're telling, maybe we had less of a heads up, but she certainly tried to do some things on her staff that was intact at that point. But they are a building that I would say is kind of piloting on the side, some of these social emotional learning competencies and trying to bring some more opportunities for kids through more meetings and providing some curriculum, all the while knowing that that's probably coming from these, from these guys and from the dean in the near future. But it was a large part of our discussions, whether I built some LTV teams, need to be meeting. You know, Anne at Lincoln at the time could certainly see her population changing. And so they were in SIAP, prepared for ELL numbers to be changing in the buildings. So the building principals that had the federal heads up probably did some things earlier than us. At Hoover, knew this population was going to be changing, same thing.
Canon Grant.
Yeah.
Had a chance to meet lots of kids back and forth between the two schools, so.
But it's a really good point about the here and now. Like, you brought up staff and has attendance zones and numbers and building enrollments are still settling for us. You know, there are potentially some staff shifts that will still have to happen again in the next week or two. So it's a stressful time for everybody getting their year up and going. By and large, we've got new students in every single building, we've had some sort of changes, principals and leadership and stuff.
I think we try to work together across the different departments. And Laura and Lisa both talked about some of the work they're doing with staffs and administrators. They talked to staff members, identify where there might need to be some follow-up. They contact us at U-Synchrony, so we make sure that we do that group approach, but also the individual approach to make sure we are meeting those needs and providing support, because it's not always one side spits all. So if we're able to identify where we can provide some one-on-one support or maybe put some different things in place, we try to do that. Try to be as proactive as possible. And I mentioned kind of the approach to ongoing engagement with staff as we look forward, taking a different look at how we're going to do that, to try to be more proactive than reactive, to move away from this, hey, how did last year go? To more of, hey, what do you want to see this year look like? What's going to make your experience better? And when it's not, it's not framed in the same part of this conversation, it's really geared towards that same idea of are we meeting your needs as an employer? Because it is. I mean, it's very geared me, right? It's, it's not, I mean, our goal is to educate kids, but we are also an employer. We're the third largest employer in the area. We need to take care of our staff. And so we're constantly looking for ways to do that so they enjoy coming to work, they feel supported at work. And we talked to the new teacher this morning, you know, talking about work-life balance. Said, we don't want you in the building eight o'clock at night. We don't want you in the building at nine o'clock at night. You're not your best self if you're not taking care of yourself. And so really trying to change that to make sure that our staff understands the approach we want to take.
Really good type of professional learning. Our people that I work with, really, they are just desperate for it. And so we have actually, that's one of the things that we're working on really, really, because, you know, that our teachers know when their students aren't doing well, which really burns them out. Because they feel like, I don't know how to help this individual, right? You know, I mean, they see the face every day. You know, we're, we're once removed from that, but they have kids in front of them who they know are struggling and they don't know what to do for them. So the teachers and parents that I work with, they love when they're offered, they'll come in during, we had a lot of PD over the summer that people just voluntarily came in for because they, they want to know how to help the students more. So I think that's a big, big thing.
One other thing that I just wanted to mention in this part before I have my last question was, when I went to Southeast last year at the end of the year, when they had their red and the students were gone and I was, I went to their staff meeting that morning before they opened doors, there was a lot of hesitation or questions about just what to do or what the school, you know, and I know that was at the end of the year, so then you had the summer and it kind of went back, but it was, with schools starting back up and staff in there again with students, I just think, you know, they keep an eye out for that and maybe some issues that maybe aren't necessarily buried anymore there, good rides back up.
Emily and I talked recently about maybe letting the year kind of start, but then not too far into the year just kind of offering, you know, some sort of a formal like check-in or a circle or something like that just to kind of reconnect, not to, you know, to handle it in the right way, but, you know, kind of voluntarily that there's a source of support for people if, you know, if they want to for the staff. So we haven't set any definite plans, but we just talked about the importance of still reaching out to people a little bit, you know, it's a process and that we're still thinking about it too and that we could provide some sort of a supportive structure to, to check in with people.
You know, we do that for kids to result in that happen right here.
Yeah. I think, I think comprehensively, we just kind of started with staff.
Yeah.
You know, some way to do it. Because it's, it's a little delicate in terms of not wanting to, you know, draw a lot of attention to it, but yet just still letting people know that it's okay, it's a process and I talk about it.
And then my last question that I had was, part of our legislative priorities was mental health. And then we said that we would send those back to the policy and governance committee to write up. So I would really like for our legislative priorities to be direct this year, as opposed to just like, we need more money for mental health, like, we need this for this and this is why, so that our legislators really know. So if you could provide your wants or needs before we meet as P and G, that would be very helpful. Because like I said, I want to be very specific. I don't want a general, we're not doing a district that's had mental health put on their legislative priorities.
Like unanimous.
Yeah, it is.
Right. And they're the same way. It's, it's a, they want to be direct versus a.
And, and yeah, funding is, I know everybody else for that, but if there are more specific, if it's guidance or if it's, that's really helpful, because legislators, they know, I'm not, it's like, well, ways we can do things.
Yes, but if we phrase it the right way and we tell our legislators what we want, they're more likely to fight for that exact thing versus an overall. So that would be very helpful before we meet, when we're at the NSS we meet. And that's all I have. Thank you. And that's all, thank you.
Anything else? Can I make one comment on that? Being a person that goes over and advocates directly in the State House, Nami would be happy to support those efforts if we could be moved in, I would offer my advocacy to help with that. This has been a amazing conversation, thank you for walking, and also question, feedback, and that here's the State House, it's extremely, to get to here, there's not anything else for emotional concerns? Thanks, guys.